4:00 PM, we are returning to the public session from an executive meeting where we discuss contract negotiations for STA, CICA, and also a discussion about interim deputy superintendent position. All right, so let's watch this. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. It's a republic over which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all. Good evening, if you guys can turn your mics on, if you haven't already. I will note Mr. Templeton will not be joining us tonight. And Ms. Miller was here for executive session, but I had to depart, so there are five of us this evening. This is a business session, there's no public, or sorry, study session, there's no public comments on a study session. We will be having another one in the beginning of June, you're welcome to return at that time. Any announcements, STA, you want to go first this time? I know Maddie is not present, so.
Good evening.
If it has the green light, it'll be on.
So the 75th anniversary celebration went really well. We had tour guides going around the school directing people toward to the art exhibits and the robotic exhibits. And also, we had a poster board displaying the 50 years of Senate as well. And there are also a lot of other clubs along the same hallway. And recently, we just had elections for the next Senate term. Results have been posted, so we're super excited to start a new term. And our holiday party will be on June 4th, so you are welcome as well. We will have like hot dogs and a bunch of free food. And, you know, looking forward to wrapping up the end of the year with just celebration of everything we've done.
Great, thank you. I got an STA water bottle, so thank you for that. I thought it was fantastic, you all did a great job. And I really, really appreciate the time and effort you spent. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing them, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Naomi is first, Indiana is second, all in favor? Five in favor, the motion passes. Dr. Robinson, do you bring those reports now?
Thank you very much, my comments will be brief and then we jump into the two information items. Just hopefully, board members, I shared our correspondence about Captain and our press conference on June 9th at one. Hopefully, if you're available, that'd be great. As they kick off, probably if you will, their campaign, Capitol campaign. And also, at that time, we'll announce, sorry to have been approved by the board, the independent sale of the district office built into Captain as well. So I think it'd be a great event, and certainly if more members could be in attendance, that'd be great. And myself and Vanessa know, so we can plan accordingly. The second piece, just want to say, you'll hear the exit poll presentation in a minute, but certainly I want to express my thanks to the community for another budget passage. And all the budgets are important. This budget particularly, since the 20th one here at Shen was important. But more important, this budget really in many ways looked down the road a little further than I think than we have in the past because of so many uncertainties that's happening at the federal level, even at the state level, and trying to position the school district with enough latitude to continue doing the things that it's doing. The $85.5 million project is going to be a key project, particularly getting down the road when a lot of needs will come to a head at the same time. And have the capacity to address those needs, it's going to be something that's going to be critical to the district as well. And lastly, but certainly not least, congratulations to Petra, Deanna, and Andrea Gallow for being selected to the board. It was a solid win for all three.
I beat the budget number. I actually beat the budget number.
Indiana's got more votes than anything else, so, you know, so she has, we actually didn't celebrate. I share that congratulations to those individuals, but also collectively as a body, knowing that the board represent individuals who truly have the district at heart and the interest of students at heart. And we can't ever take that for granted, especially when you start looking across the country and some of the, you know, having it across the country quite frankly, just looking in the capital region and some of the craziness that's happening with boards of education and bringing political ideologies and biased individual beliefs to the board table and forgetting about the organizational experience that we're trying to provide to our students. So kudos to this board for staying true to our vision and mission as an organization as well. So certainly, this future is bright as a result of the vote on this past Tuesday. As I say, we have two presentations tonight. The first is the exit poll, which kind of summarizes and gives you some comparison, contrast. And then we'll follow up with IPAC presentation about some things coming out of IPAC related to instructional materials and things of that nature. So tonight is kind of one of those shorter nights, so to speak, but we'll take it since the sun is shining brightly. So at this point, I'll turn it over for the exit poll interview. Presentations.
Ms. Barkley? Welcome, thank you for joining us. All right, so year three of doing exit poll results.
The mouse is right there if you want to.
Okay, great.
Right. So this year, we had a few less voters overall, which wasn't totally unexpected. It was an uncontested board election, which we generally see a bit less voters in that case, but we also have seen across the years a general trend of fewer voters. So it is something to consider. That being said, we did have more people take the exit poll this year, which is exciting. And a lot of positive things to come out of the exit poll this year. Well, actually, I'll get to that in another slide, actually.
So, are you going to, I wanted to say thank you for the QR code.
Yeah.
I thought that was really smart, and then that way people could do it on their phone and walk out. And you're not just stuck like sitting at a keyboard. I think that might have a lot to do with it.
Yeah, so for those that don't know, we provide three methods for people to take the exit poll. We provide a paper method for people that don't feel as comfortable utilizing technology. We provide Chromebooks onsite, and then we provide the QR code for people that want to sort of take it as they leave, which I do think has helped increase the amount of people that are taking the exit poll through the years. And the exit poll is very helpful because it gives us a sense of how people feel about the taxes that we're asking of them. Also, we ask a number of, and we'll get into this, specific questions about what they feel most strongly about in terms of what's important to them that the district does. And we also see changes that happen, and I'll note a couple of those this year as well that help myself and other departments kind of adjust what we do based on what they have to say. So the exit poll is a very helpful thing that we do. So in terms of demographic, this year we saw the greatest increase in number of voters from Rexford, as it says here. Everything else remained rather similar. A lot of voters ages 31 and over, again, fairly similar to last year. And 85% of voters are not employees of the district. And this year, we did see a slight increase in employee voters, which is also a good thing to see. So like I said, we saw an increase this year in the amount of people that have taken the poll. Historically, it's usually between 12 and 17%. Last year it was 12%, this year it was 15%. So it is exciting to see more people taking the time to share their thoughts with us because like I said, it is really helpful to get an idea of how people are feeling and why they are voting the way that they do. 84% of the poll takers, so this isn't 84% overall, this is specifically the people that took the poll and voted in favor of the budget. And the largest percentage listed maintaining quality programs as the most important factor for their vote. This has remained consistent over the years. And projected tax rate being the lowest, again, that has remained consistent. So each year, of course, we see people that are concerned about tax rates and things like that, but we see this general trend that people really care about the programs that we're doing and are a little less concerned based on what they're telling us about the projected tax rate. Not to say that we're not very mindful about that, but it is interesting to see. All right, in terms of factors in voting, quality staff has, for the last few years, remained the highest, the highest vote in terms of what people consider most important for their voting factors. And I think, again, that's important to know because then HR can consider that with people really care about the quality of our staff members. And I think we do a really great job, and it's part of why people support these budgets with the people that we hire. And then, again, next, coming close second, was rigorous and relevant curriculum, and then academic, social, emotional health support and services. Those are the top three in terms of why people voted the way that they did. 79% of voters felt that administration and board were leading the district in the right direction most or all of the time. This is up 3% from last year. And 91% say that we provide an excellent or good quality of education. And those are similar numbers, we see a common trend with years remaining around the 90% mark. So, again, it's good to see that people feel that we're doing the right things. Seven out of 10 feel that district taxes are reasonable, up 1% from last year. And six out of 10 say that they would be willing to pay more than the amount allowed under the tax levy limit. And these are just helpful things to see. Sometimes what we hear is sort of people that have concerns, which are very relevant and important, but it is great to have the numbers that we can apply to things to know that we are headed in the right direction and people feel confident about the things that we're doing. This is the part that is very relevant to me, and I was very interested to see, communications. 64% feel that we provide good, sound information all of the time. It's up 7% from previous years, so that's good, we're trending in a good direction, which is nice to see. The new thing this year that I thought was really interesting, district newsletter and website always tend to be at the top in terms of where people say they're getting their information. Local newspaper inched out above some other things this year for the first time, so that's very interesting to see. And I then looked, because I was curious if our age demographics changed in terms of who was taking the poll because generally, you see a slightly older age demographic that's getting their information from newspapers, but the age demographic hasn't changed. So I found that kind of curious, and that's certainly something that Brooke and I will be exploring in our communications. Is that something that we need to consider more and need to explore? So again, that's why these things are really helpful if a lot of people are getting.
Can I ask you a question? Is it the age demographic of all voters or the age demographic of those taking the poll?
Taking the poll, so we only know, we only have that of those who take the poll, yeah.
Kelly, do you think it could be that they're going, you know, to online resources for newspapers? It's, you know, it's not, but there's.
Certainly, yeah, yes, not necessarily.
Definitely be, yeah.
Yes, not necessarily print newspaper, but some sort of paper resource, yes. So whether it be, you know, The Times or Gazette or whatever, maybe.
I don't remember what the other options were on this, but like Facebook, right? And social media is actually pretty far down.
Social media, let's see.
If it's not the top three, I find that really interesting.
It is, and again, these things are very helpful to know, so one moment to find the right page here.
Because I personally find Facebook to be very unreliable because you never know when it's going to pop something up, but sometimes it's days later, right? And the event occurs, and it's very frustrating.
Well, it's great to see too, that the district newsletter, which is not, you know, it's more traditional, but people are still counting on it, and they really want to use that as a tool.
That's really good, yeah.
To get information, that's very interesting.
Yeah, so district social media fell, I would say about in the middle. Things that, other things that were above that were parent portal.
But the only thing I'm going to say here, that people that are voting, right, very small percentage of people that voted are mostly tuned in to the district, in my opinion, right? I mean, you're tuned in, you're voting. So if you went global and, you know, you've got like 25,000 people to do this, I'd be interested to see what they do.
I hear what you're saying.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, the people that do the exit polls are inherently invested, right? They're self-selecting, it's telling you what, yeah.
So for us to think, you know, you're thinking maybe, hey, Shen parents, people are on there all the time, why isn't that like line up?
Right.
But I also see the take here is that it's, I think it's a positive direction.
Oh, I'm not, yeah, I agree, wholeheartedly agree, but I'm just trying to put it into perspective. We have a low, you know what I mean, these are the people that are too new.
It's like, it's like a little more than, what, 10% of the people that voted or the ones that did the exit polls, right? Because like 2,100 voted.
15%.
15%, yeah.
So, I mean, that's pretty good, yeah.
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
I mean, like we said, it's up 3% from last year. It is nice to see, even with fewer voters, that you have more people taking the time to take the exit poll. And I guess that would feel discouraging if generally they were taking the time to take the exit poll because they were angry about things. And certainly, people had comments to share, and they use this as an outlet to share those comments. But they're, I mean, we've, a lot of things are trending pretty positively, which is nice to see, yeah, so. And then.
Comments.
Comments. So these are always interesting, and you always have to take these with a grain of salt, but some of the trends in the comments that we saw, people felt very positively about DEI efforts at Shen, which is nice to see, and they were very interested for those to continue. People were very impressed with the voting process this year, which is not what we have always seen. So kudos to Barb and her team for making a very seamless voting process. And a lot of notes about how kind the people that were working the polls were, so that was really nice. People had a lot to say about arts and clubs, they want to see even more, they're really happy with how much we have to offer in terms of arts and clubs, and they said, go to town, do even more of it. Want more information leading up to budget vote. So, I mean, we do the newsletter, we do the website, we do all those things, but people are saying we want more. So maybe that's something to explore, how we can provide even more information about the budget and what's going on there outside of the newsletter, social media, things like that. That's certainly something we can look into. A lot of special education comments, people just wanting to know more about what's happening in special education, wanting us to increase special education offerings. And so again, that was something interesting for Brooke and I to see, really that's now something for us to explore, how we can assist Michelle and Brienne with communicating more about special education and what's going on in their department. Full day kindergarten, of course, in the works, and concerns about AI impact on education. And the thing that I thought was really interesting about what a lot of the comments were on are things that we are already working on, that we are actively in the process. We have, you know, Cecily's AI team that's looking into AI in education and the impacts. We have full day kindergarten in the works. We've been doing all these things with special education with Michelle and Brienne. These are all things that we've been working on, and so what I take away from this is how I can help support how we let people know about all of these things that we're working on. And so those are, those are the trends, and it's nice to see that people, overall, of course, you know, people have their concerns and things like that, but overall, it felt like a year that was more positive. So that was nice, as the person that gets, has to read all of those comments to feel pretty good about most of what was in there, so. Any questions?
This is great, thank you, I really appreciate you doing this over here.
Do good stuff, thank you.
Thank you.
Being positive. Okay, next up, we have the IPAC update, new textbooks and course updates. The read page, I know, present to me, man, I was a little surprised, like where is the rest of it? So, all right.
So, good evening. Yes, I was trying to be just safe, but you have the full backup information in the document or the memo that was provided. So this is our spring instructional program advisory council update. Typically in the spring, we bring you new textbooks, but we do actually have some course updates as well. Usually, our new courses are always proposed in the fall update, but we do have a couple of changes that are on the horizon. So we have a lot of new textbooks that are going to be purchased, and I'm driving, I'm just not used to driving because my presentation is so long usually. All right, so we have a new book for our high school business course for college accounting, and this is a text that's required by Hudson Valley Community College, so be in alignment with the curriculum requirements for the course. We will be purchasing new textbooks for that process. We have our medical terminology, which is a new course we proposed this fall, which will be a very popular course coming in online this coming fall. And so this course will require a new textbook as well as a dictionary resource. And we had an interesting conversation, I remember Carla and Mary Caroline were present for that, around who uses a dictionary, right, in this day and age. And so they talked about the importance of the students having that at their fingertips in the classroom, and how, yes, in the medical field, we've had a lot of conversations about the medical field, and not just a doctor or nurse, but people who are in healthcare or health insurance as well, being able to utilize resources at the tip of their fingers. Another new course is our digital audio production course this year. And so we had to look at an application or software that we could utilize with students who are at the beginning level of audio production. Remember, this course is going to bring in a wide range of students. It's not just targeted at your long-term, long-time music student, but students who may have an interest in the creation of music but do not play an instrument. And so the team did some research on software that would be preparing students for the industry standard, but also accessible to students who are entering in digital auto production. What's interesting about this software is there's a one-time cost, so we'll have an opportunity to review, just like we do with any other textbook, whether this still works for us in the years to come, and to make a different decision if we so choose. Next up is, really it's K2, third grade's going to use something slightly different, but Foundations Decodable Readers. We currently use Foundations as an instructional program to teach students what we call foundational skills in literacy. Phonemic awareness and phonics would be probably terms that you're more familiar with. And so we've been teaching Foundations for the last almost five years because I feel like Shen was on the cutting edge of making the changes that are now required by science of reading. However, we did not have additional supporting texts for students to continue to practice those skills in small group or independently. So the purchase of these texts, which is a significant investment because it's tiny little books that you put in tiny little hands, will allow them to have texts that relate to the material that was taught during the course of the week. Students are then able to practice those skills and demonstrate mastery before they move into the next set of skills. And it was a request that really came from our primary teachers and even our third grade teachers looking for more texts that students can read at their level and practice the skills that they are being taught. For high school world language, we have new textbooks, both Latin II and Latin III, and these are to match updated standards and updated pedagogical practices in Latin instruction. I think you are well aware of how incredible our Latin program is here at Shen and how it continues to grow. And so we have teachers who have really thought through what resources are most useful in providing instruction to students that is most aligned with current practice. K through 5, again, I'm not used to driving. K through 5, science is actually STEM, and it's a typing software. And so we did a pilot this year on typing software at the elementary level with grades 3 through 5. We got representatives from each building to try on typing software. A lot of our teachers use free typing software at this point in time, but as a part of the digital literacy standards that we were required to put in place this year, we felt that we wanted a consistent software that we use across all buildings, not just something that teachers were using a free version of. So the pilot really helped us distill down a typing program that students found engaging, but also taught them the critical skills that they would need to be proficient typers. I don't know about you, but I learned typing in high school. And so now, because of all the computer-based pieces that our students do, they will now learn these skills as early as third grade, and actually, many of them use them in second grade as well. Next, we have global history and geography for our high school social studies courses. The last print version of the text that they had used was from 2008, and I think I talked to you in the fall, because we actually purchased one for US history that was in a similar situation. And to the credit of the social studies department, they have been very particular about selecting a resource that they would use in their classes that would stay current and be reflective of the work that they attempt to do both pedagogically and with curriculum with our students. And so they ended up selecting a platform from SABAS that involves both a textbook, that they'll purchase a class set for each classroom, that remains in the classroom as a, again, some people like to have a book to go to, I know people are like, why a dictionary, why a textbook? But we think it's important for students to have that concrete resource, while at the same time, having a digital resource that they're able to utilize that allows for some updating and keeping things current. You all know from having the textbooks in school, you got to the end of the textbook, and it was, you know, three years behind what the current times were. This will allow us to stay current, and this is a three-year contract. So again, you'll be able to review and ensure that it still meets our need, and it's the best resource out there. And last but not least, is another new course from this year. We added a management and leadership classroom in our high school business department. And so we have selected both the textbooks and a digital license to support those, that class as well, so those students have the most current resource in front of them.
Is that another one of the college affiliate courses?
This is not, this is a good question. When we presented it in the fall, it is modeled after a college-level course. We have not decided to, we have not decided to make it a college-credentialed course yet. They really want to run the course this year and maybe into the next year to see what kids benefit from participating in it. And again, this was another course that ended up being very popular. So making decisions about being able to have juniors and seniors have access to this class, and eventually for college credit, if that opportunity presents itself.
Can I ask for clarification?
Sure.
Make sure these two courses, so this one's planned for the fall.
Correct.
And so when you talk about, you know, it's very popular, you know, how are you getting that feedback?
Great question. So, our students go through a course request process. So right after the holiday break, or actually over the holiday break, really into Regents Week, students get their programming studies, right? And this year, it was online for our high school students, Mr. Davis came and did that presentation. And so students go through, much like you would at the college level, the course offerings that are available. They look for their required courses, they take their, you know, look for the elective course that they have interest in, and then they put in their course request. Just because you request a course doesn't guarantee that it fits in your schedule, and, you know, in terms of being able to run it at a time that you can fit it in, and doesn't guarantee that hundreds of kids have requested that same classroom. So typically with electives, what we do is, we look at seniors, then juniors, then sophomores to ensure that we give access to students who will ultimately leave high school and not actually be able to participate in this course, right, by starting with seniors, so that we're able to prioritize. So there are course requests that help us determine what classes actually get to run at the high school level because we can't run all sections of everything.
There's already demand there, so.
Which is great, and that's what we like to see, honestly. When we bring a course to IPAC in the fall, it's great that we have students on there, we have great students this year, really talk about, yeah, that's a class I would take, or yes, my friends would take that class. But then to see it actually come through in the course request process, that children are really interested in management and leadership, they were really interested in medical terminology, you know, there's oftentimes more sections that are requested than we're able to run despite based on the staff and that we have, and that's a great thing coming out of IPAC. And then usually after three years, maybe four, in the spring, we also review courses that were brought to IPAC three or four years ago, and look at what the impact that those courses have been over the course of three years. Has the interest in that class been sustained, has it dwindled significantly, or has it maintained? Which is always great to see. And in my short time here, each course that's been brought forward has maintained or increased their interest among students. So there are courses that we've really done a good job of selecting.
Or rebranding.
Yes, and some rebrand, or to add college credenti.
Or, yes, even better, yes. This is great, thank you.
And so we do have two course credential updates. Last year, we brought forward our Regents Physics class and let you know that it met the criteria to be credentialed by Hudson Valley because it was aligned with an entry-level physics course at Hudson Valley that was targeted towards students who are going into the construction trades. But when they look at the topics that are covered in the Hudson Valley class, they were very closely aligned with several topics that we are required to teach in Regents-level physics, which is why we took advantage of the opportunity of trying to credential that course in Hudson Valley. We ran that course this year, and all the students who took that courses this year and complete the requirements will receive Hudson Valley credit. But looking into next year, a conversation was began late this winter about how this course doesn't align with the direction that Hudson Valley is going in with this course for construction trades. And some of the lab requirements in particular tied to the construction trades weren't something that we would be able to fit in our Regents course because we have Regents labs that we're required to continue to implement. And so after much conversation between our academic administrator for science, our student wrote the innovation director, and Hudson Valley, the decision was made that this course should no longer be credentialed through Hudson Valley, and we will just continue to run it as a regular Regents Physics course. Remember, we still have CEM physics that students are able to take for eight credits, but this just seems like a great opportunity to get some Regents-level students, college credit. We'll continue to look for options that align that way when they align, but we don't want to force-fit our courses into a college-level course if it doesn't in fact fit. And we don't want to bring in requirements. if it doesn't in fact fit. And we don't want to bring in requirements that don't meet the needs of our students at this point in time in their pathway.
So this is going to sound really odd, but is there any way to collaborate with BOSI's then on the testing requirement for, you know, the lab piece?
It's not, it's really the time in the school year to cover particular topics, right? So we have required standards and topics that we have to cover in physics, Regents physics, in order for it to be Regents physics. And then Hudson Valley has a course that they offer. And while some of those topics may align really nicely, some of the projects and the work that needs to specifically happen don't continue to align.
I was thinking of the projects in one piece.
Yes.
That would be, there'd be an opportunity, but if there's not a time of the day, there's not a.
Right, right. And then the college and credentialing piece coming from Hudson Valley was the, really was what the add-on was.
I see, okay, thank you.
However, we did find another course this year and that was our Masterpieces of Drama and Musical Theater. And so students will be able to earn credits for, through Hudson Valley for this course. And again, we look for courses that have the potential to easily align with courses that already exist and we're not retrofitting our classes to fit Hudson Valley or vice versa. And so we will have this new opportunity for students.
I have never seen a musical theater course as an English course.
Oh, yes.
And I think that's fantastic.
Oh, yes. We don't, International Baccalaureate has a musical theater course that they also credit as an English course. So they kind of put those two things together. And if you see, if you have the opportunity to see it, one piece of it is students actually writing their own pieces and performances and then part of it is performing, which is pretty cool.
Yeah, you're going to get a whole different section of students in that that are going to be very interested.
And it's an existing course. It's already very popular.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And for those of you, I'm sure everyone that's in this room has probably already seen the memo or has access to the memo. But for anyone who's watching online, the, hi mom. The memo is appended to the agenda and so you can get all the specifics about which textbook and which typing app and all that is in there. So that's excellent. All right, moving on to the action items. I know they're all separated out as A, B, C, D, and E. I'm going to list them all, but we're going to vote them as a group because it's the same document. We're just going to, you know, mention that we had a certification of the budget vote, certification of the BOE member vote, certification of the butch, butch, of the bus purchase proposition, the certification of capital project reserve resolution and the certification of the capital project. Can I have a motion to approve all of these in bulk? Deanna is first, Naomi is second, all in favor? Five in favor, the motion passes. Thank you, guys. Very exciting. We have a budget for the coming year. Great job. Next up is a resolution for the reorganization meeting. I believe this is mandated by SED?
Education law. If it's not the first Tuesday, we have to vote to do that.
I see. And because it is not the first Tuesday, we are voting to have it on.
July eighth, one.
July eighth, great. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the July eighth meeting? Carla is first, Naomi is second, all in favor? Five in favor, motion passes. Next up, we have the capital project change order. Again, this is actually a reduction in the amount of money that we have been spending to the $251,596. Can I have a motion to approve this capital change order? Mary Colleen is first, Deanna is second, all in favor? Five in favor, motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have one bid for a student-built modular home. I thought we had this on the agenda a while ago and then it seems to have resurfaced.
Yeah, because it changed bidders.
I see. Well, there was a, there's a minimum bid which we received and the lucky recipient is required to bring it down to within the Catskill region, yes, on their own account. So I am very happy to say we sold the house. Can I have a motion to approve the selling of the house? Mary Colleen is first, Carla is second, all in favor? Five in favor, motion passes and good job to all of those students. What a fantastic opportunity, really, to learn how to do that. Next up, we have the BOSI's IMS purchase for CrowdStrike. I remember infamously the CrowdStrike was, had that really, really bad bug, but it still appears to be the best in the business for what it does. And we're buying through BOSI's and so we have not so much a discount, but the group purchase, so it benefits us. Can I have a motion to approve that? Yes, Naomi is first for the BOSI's and Deanna is second, all in favor?
For the board.
Yeah, for the board, five in favor, the motion passes. Thank you. And last up, I know Jenny is in here. Oh, Dr. Wilson Turner is filling in. We have a staffing recommendations. Thank you so much. Jenny is out ill today.
So before you, you have our staffing appointments and agenda for your approval. I would like to take a moment to highlight a couple of new staff that will be joining the Shenandoah Hola leadership team. And one may be very familiar to you. So first up is Jackie Mahowski, who's currently a class assistant principal, who will be appointed as associate principal. Then we have Jason Belnap coming to us from Schenectady, who will be a class assistant principal of the high school. And then we have Jacqueline Cofflin, who will also be coming to us as a class assistant principal for the high school. So a big night for the high school. And then, last but certainly not least, we will have Philip Weinman join us as the Acacia Middle School principal. So I put all of those items before you. Do you have any retirements tonight that I could see? So I put all those before you.
Congratulations.
So soon as we vote, they're going to come off.
This is fantastic. Yeah, yeah, we're going to vote and then you guys can help me correctly do. Can I get a motion to approve? Naomi is first, Carla is second, all in favor? Five in favor, the motion passes. Congratulations.
We're going to rotate, okay?
And thank you to the several little people we have in the audience. You've been fantastic, by the way.
Very good.
So good, so good. Does anyone have anything for, like, did it the order?
I did have a few things.
Sure.
So let me just jump to my notes. So first, this is very nice, the seventy-fifth, from Senator Tedesco, the resolution. Providing copies for all of us. I think that's a really nice touch and something I do cherish and just very appreciative of that.
Somebody, Mary, Mary Beth Walsh gave that to us.
She did, she did a separate one. This is from Tedesco.
Oh.
Yes.
I think it's actually a group.
Is it a joint one?
Yeah, because she has a lot as well.
Oh, yeah, sure, I do see your name.
Yeah.
I just saw his, oh, this would sound so bad, but sorry, Mary Beth, if you're out there listening. So the other thing I wanted to mention is that, just for the record, this is also for the minutes that we have an audit committee meeting. These are open, these are open meetings. They need to open meetings, law requirement. It's going to be Monday, June 2nd at 3:30 PM in the district office conference room. So it's also at the bottom of the agenda. This serves as public notice and I just wanted to mention that as I do serve on a plate as do, as does Carla. And just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. And also, I just wanted to do, just a reminder that tomorrow's the twenty-fifth celebration for those employees that have met the twenty-five year requirement, four o'clock in High School West cafeteria. So if you can go, that would be just delightful. So I'm looking forward to that event.
Thank you very much. And congratulations in advance to everyone that has met or exceeded the twenty-five years. That's just incredible, incredibly. Anyone else? I just want to reiterate, great job on the seventy-fifth anniversary. It was fantastic. The cake was fantastic. I would say Mr. Pieces was my favorite, but generally they were all very, very good. And if there is nothing else, we're going to have a short meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Deanna is first and Carla is second, all in favor? Five in favor, motion passes. Thank you all for coming.